Good evening. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order. It is Wednesday, February 20, 2019. It's 7:01 PM. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar. And I would ask if there are any questions that any of the council has about that? If not, motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move consent calendar, items one through 14.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, open forum. Is there anyone on the, or anyone in the audience this evening who would like to speak about a topic that is not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will move to D, reports. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor Heidman. Good evening, members of the council. Just a couple of quick updates for you outside of new business items that I'm glad to answer questions on later. Just wanted to let you know that our new website will be live on Monday, so you can look for that. And also, we'll start to share information about how you can subscribe to pages so you get notifications when updates are made and things like that. So it'll be really, it'll be really nice. So we're excited about that. Our audit was last week, our year-end audit, and that went very well. Our auditors are planning on coming to our March meeting to give their report and an update from the 2018 year. So just want to let you know that that went very well. I've been working on the comprehensive plan update, and we should be able to get the newest, I'll say, final draft to the Planning Commission at their March meeting so they can take a look at everything and give their okay before we set the public hearing schedule and get the last final steps in place. So that's moving forward. And I just received an email from the county that they're going to put our recycling funding request on their next county board agenda, so that is moving forward as well. So those are all the updates I have, and happy to answer questions if anyone has anything for me.
How are we doing for applications for P&amp;Z?
We've had a lot of interest. Working on getting the pieces of information that we'll need as far as application, resume, all those things. But we've had a fair amount of interest. I haven't looked too closely at the details yet as far as qualifications, but I will be doing that middle of next week.
Do we have something set up with Justin Burzley? As far as days?
Yes, yes, thank you. Justin from Sourcewell is, will be here Tuesdays all day and Thursdays from 8 to noon. He does have some flexibility if we need him more. He can make that work if we need. He's also willing, and he said he'll keep up to date on emails and things like that so he can keep things moving. But so far, that's been great. He was here yesterday and got oriented and kind of back into what the issues are and working on the next Planning Commission meeting, and that's going well, so preparation-wise. But Justin will likely help me sort through the applications we receive and give his input, which I'll definitely want to have that perspective when we get to that point.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yes, you're welcome.
D2, City Attorney. Do you have anything? Mr. Pearson, except what's coming up later?
No, other than that, no, not here.
Okay, very good. We'll address that in under old business. Mark Allen, City Engineer.
Good evening, everyone. Just, we've done, completed the preliminary layout for the bridge, you know, 2616 on Hazelwood. And then we put together a sketch that shows some property acquisition, I'll call them, I should say, property easements, that the city's going to have to be approaching the landowners on because you're actually linked to that bridge to about around 50 feet because you're making provisions for a trail, the multiple trail. Plus, you have to meet state aid standards in, you know, the 1920s. Bridge was, well, you know, the size of it. So, and that was, you know, you did the same thing on Cullitt. You actually approached the property owners on both sides and worked through and obtained easements from those property owners for the new bridge. So we provided that sketch to staff, and they will be, you know, working with the property owners on that here over the next few months as we put, because we need to have those put together, but we do submit down to state aid for that. So that occurred last week. And then Hazelwood and Smiley Road surveys have been completed. So we're, you know, we have that information, and we're doing, you know, Justin is working some of the preliminary layouts for that. Here over the last couple of days, you just talked about the Planning Commission. I've, I'll say, a half dozen emails. The property north of Hills Crossings, you know, has been purchased by, I think it's Gibbon Construction, and they are working on a, you know, planned unit development for residential on that. So there's been a flurry of emails from their engineer asking questions on your ordinances and the sanitary sewer extension. And Tom's been copied with all the emails regarding the sewer, road, and everything else. So just, you know, so the Planning Commission will be seeing that, I would guess, at your next meeting, because there's just been a lot of information on the last few days on that. So that's everything I have. Unless there's questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mark.
All right, thank you.
Moving to new business, item E1, recommendation to hire Connor Collette as police officer.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I spoke to Chief Taylor about this, and at this time, I would make a recommendation that we hire, we offer for hire Connor Collette as a police officer. From what I understand, he's very, 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 the people interviewing were very impressed. Young man, very impressed. Seems to have a good head on his shoulders.
Second with a question. Could we get a little background on him, other than his name?
Certainly, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. He is currently a police officer for another neighboring city in the area, so he's from the area, lives here, and he's, sorry, it caught me a little off guard, so I, we can provide a little background, you know, for the council to get to know him a little bit at the next meeting. That'd be-
Do you know roughly, Jenny, is, how many years he's been a police officer?
I want to say about two.
Oh, two?
So, new officer, but working full-time and has been doing a great job and had some great references, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Any other, any other particular questions you have, Tom?
No, I just wanted a little background, so I knew who I was talking about.
I can have Craig reach out to you, too. Or you can give him a call, whichever you want.
Okay.
Shouldn't say aye, could have.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E2, recommendation from Park and Rec Advisory Commission to approve resolution supporting application for the DNR Federal Recreation Trail. And that is a standard item that the council has to do for grants. And so I guess I would just open by asking if there's any questions that the council has about that process or matching funds for it. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move the resolution number 19 as presented by the staff.
No second?
Seconded by Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E3, a memo from WSB and Crow Wing County regarding the intersection improvement of State Highway 371 at County Road 13 and County Road 77. Council information, we received a letter from WSB, and they were saying that they're thinking this is going to move forward now.
They are, yes. The county is working towards finalizing the details of the project for this summer. They haven't yet met with all of the property owners, but they have met with the majority of them, and so far, it sounds like that's gone pretty well. This letter, we received this late last week and just provided it to the council for information. I have spoken with county staff a little bit yesterday, and they said that these numbers are still rough numbers. They're working on getting some more details and specifics, and they'd like to meet with the council and provide more details in March so that you have more information. I'm working on putting together a list of my own questions and would like to just mention to the council, if you have questions, please call me or email me and let me know so I can include it all as one package for them so they can go through the details. But trying to understand cost estimates and then available funds the county would have, and some of those variables, I think, will be important, so. Questions?
They mentioned right-of-way, sorry.
Go ahead.
They mentioned right-of-way related costs here.
Yes.
I guess I'm having a hard time picturing, wondering if there really is right-of-way needed. Are they, are they actually widening anything there? I don't recall really anything being widened.
I don't think it, when they presented it, I don't think it was too much.
Yeah.
Because on the east side, you can't widen it much at all.
Oh.
They were blocking the, one of the driveways to the church.
Right.
Are you familiar with anything there, Mark?
Well, what they had presented is that, you know, if the city was going to allow for a trail in that corridor, and, you know, after the discussion was because of the loading docks into Shafers, you know, the trail really would need to be on the north side. You know, what they were laying out is that if this goes forward and a trail corridor is going to be provided for, that probably, the number they threw out was about five feet of property from the bank and from the church would be, need to be acquired. Because they're recommending if it's going to be happening, it should happen as part of this project, you know, whether the trail comes along next year or 20 years, but then the corridor is set up for a trail.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, it wasn't 20 feet they were talking about. And I guess I, in this correspondence, I did respond back to staff that said, just let's remember that when this, as this comes along, you know, the city worked very, you were a very good neighbor, working with the bank and making that site work for them. So I would expect any property acquisition from them would be-
Yeah.
At a very nice fee, let's just say.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, we did, I mean, if you're Desmond, worked with them, and the city made it work for the bank, but the intent was at that time, we might want to ask for five feet of property along that side. Yep?
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
I'm a little concerned about the total cost that they want to send over to us. It seems, seems to me, maybe my position is wrong, but if it's a county road project, they should pay the cost for the county road project and not assess us a quarter of a million dollars for something they think that benefits us. I'm not so sure. I'm a little disturbed about that. I don't know who said that we'd need a trail there. I don't know where that came from, but I think that should be part of the discussion. And finally, the dollar figure they're talking about, the county has a policy on chargeback, and they had one for the last 15, 20 years. And last I heard, they were reassessing that policy, they'd come up with something new. I'm wondering if these numbers are the old policy numbers or the new policy numbers.
They are the old policy numbers. They have not updated their policy since 2013.
Well, it'll be interesting to know if they're going to change the numbers right after they charge us, but I'd like to know what the numbers really are.
Well, there's a piece of information that I was going to bring up regarding this tonight, and just, there's a, there's a monthly mayor's meeting, local mayors get together, and one of the topics of discussion was exactly this. And kind of where the discussion started to go, but there wasn't any, like, action, is it was pretty well agreed by all the mayors in discussion that the half a cent tax, sales tax, that the county has was granted, was to be used to augment the current, their current at that time and into the future, their annual road maintenance budget. There's some concern that it's possible that the county commissioners actually took a guess at what that half a percent might bring in and actually lowered their budget by that amount, which, if that indeed would be the case, that would probably not be the most appropriate. But it seems like the, there's some, quite enough interest with the mayors that I'm not, we'll probably talk about it at the, at the next meeting again, but it's possible that we may look to get together with the county commissioners and talk with them about this because they are now receiving, I think it's three to four million dollars a year in this half a percent sales tax going to the roads. And the point you make, Don, is, is a good one. And that is, when a city redoes their street, they don't go to the county and say, hey, we want you to kick in 10% or 5% or 20%. So, you know, there's a feeling that because of this, you know, the half of, the sales tax that's going for the roads, that we need to find out more about what the county commissioners decided and have done at the time that the, they started receiving the sales tax, what they did with their budget. And then to have some discussion with them that, hey, you guys are getting three to four million dollars extra a year, maybe you shouldn't be coming to us, or whatever percentage or whatever they, they use. So there is some, there's some discussion that's happening, and I don't know how that will tie into the county road 13 and 77 project, but we'll have to, we'll have to see.
May be an interesting meeting next time.
Could be. You know, and the sad part is, you know, and this was kind of discussed, when, when, you know, when a county road issue comes up, the county engineers come meet with city councils. And, you know, they're the bearer of bad news, so to speak. They didn't make the policy. It was handed down to them that this is what your budget is to work with. So it's kind of, you know, they're kind of the wrong, the wrong person in a way to be bending their ear about it because there's nothing they can do. It was decided by the commissioners, and so the commissioners are really the ones that need to be approached and have some discussion with this, or about this. And because, you know, that three to four million should be augmenting the budget, not replacing part of it, if that is indeed the case. So I don't know exactly how that would possibly come together, you know, if the, you know, if a group of mayors would contact the county and look to set up a meeting with the commissioners or go to a commissioner meeting and, and have that discussion with them. That's kind of yet to be seen, but it is on the radar of just about every community here in the area, so passing that along.
We may be the first one to say no.
Actually, there is, well, there's one other who's-
Getting close.
Very close, yeah.
What happens if we say no?
I don't know. You know, to be honest, I don't know that they can enforce it. I mean, I don't know, and what to-
Do they just not do the project, then?
I don't know. Tom, Mr. Pearson, City Attorney, what would be, what would your guess be? I mean, what would you?
That they could hang over your head that they won't contribute the project without contribution. But which time to decide on which that matters to you?
No, go ahead and do it.
What's that?
They'll do it.
So- They have matching funds from federal or whatever.
So one, you know, one, one baby step at a time.
So this was just sort of FYI at this point?
Yes, just wanted to, this is what I received last week and wanted to share with you, and we're waiting for the cost numbers, at least something, to start the conversation, so that's what we have here now, and more to come in March, and I'll be working with their staff to have more details. So please let me know if you think of any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny. Moving along, item E4, resolution accepting donations. And-
Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the resolution number 19 as presented for a total amount of contributions of $1,480.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Ryan. So we would be looking to accept donations from American National Bank, Drive-Thru Inc. and Drive-Thru Inc. And who is Drive-Thru Inc. production?
They're the ones who did the New Care commercial on the, a couple weeks ago on the trail out here. Remember, they blocked the road off for a short time.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, I remember that. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to, do we, will the city receive a copy of that video that they're doing, or do you care?
I haven't seen the official commercial yet. I think it's supposed to come out sometime in the next month or so, I believe.
Okay.
But when I do, I can share that.
Sure.
I'll check with the chamber. They probably will know-
Sure.
Right away.
Item E5, letter from Crow Wing County Water and Soil and Water Conservation District regarding a resolution regarding the administration of the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act of 1991. It's information only. Kind of peruse through it and-
Just a quick question.
Just in good information.
The existing memo of understanding terminates March 31, 2019, and if nothing is done between now and then, where do we stand? We have to do this ourselves, which we can't do.
If I could-
Yes, please.
Basically, what would happen for us is if we had any development or projects that had a wetland impact that we needed to evaluate, we would need to hire someone to, to provide that expertise for us, whereas we used to be able to go to the soil and water, and they would help provide that guidance. So I spoke with Cade Stephenson, I believe is his name, and he said certainly for the interim, they will still assist and work through some of those issues if we, if we need assistance, but going forward, we'll have to come up with a new process. I've also reached out to the city of Brainerd, as noted in some of the emails here, as far as, is the, are the area cities looking to do something collectively to have one point of contact to work these items through? I haven't heard it back yet, but we'll just have to work through each item as it comes and, you know, reach out to, whether it's, you know, a WSN to provide some guidance about who we could call to get some help with something, but for now, I don't think there's any immediate concern that we have. Just information.
Thank you, Jenny. Item E6, recommendation from Public Works Committee to purchase a John Deere XUV. We actually have two recommendations. The first one is just simply XUV. We have the financial information in our packet. Roughly, they're about $15,500 each. Right, each, Tom? Isn't that what it is? Thanks. And I was at the Public Works meeting and heard the presentation about it. Machines are 10 years old, the two are 10 years old, in the cycle to be replaced. So that, so that, but that is actually the next item. The gator is, that's new, right?
No, we're all on the air.
Well, we, do we have a gator?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I thought we just had the, the Bobcat unit. Okay.
No, the sewer department has a gator.
Okay.
It's what he uses for his montergill, so of course we have to call it all parts. We might have to pack it. All the people that are locked, some of them just going, are we keeping the old ones that are, are the old ones, or some of the other operations that are, we, for example?
Yeah. Okay.
Question? Are all three of these currently in the budget for this year, or is this?
Yes.
Just going to mention that. If there's no other questions, I'd go ahead and make a recommend, or motion to approve the recommendation to purchase the John Deere XUV as presented?
I'll second that. Seconded by Ryan. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E7, recommendation from the Public Works Committee, purchase two John Deere X739 mowers.
Mr. Mayor, I move the approval to purchase two John Deere X739 mowers for $15,411.26, including the trade-in value of the machines going to be traded in for these two new ones.
Is there, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ryan. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is old business, and item F1 is memo from City Attorney Tom Pearson regarding the Lou Rees property at 26130 Birch Avenue. I see in reading the letters that you have sent that, that we've been making a good-faith effort to reach out and have some meaningful conversation. That appears to not be happening. There was an application for, for planning and zoning to do-
A variance?
A variance, yes. And, and that, the requirements for that application were not met, and apparently, the property owner has not been back, or has not replied in any way since then to any communications. So it is up to the council to decide what it would like to do next.
You mentioned, you know, starting the abatement process. Can you give us the Cliff Notes version of what that entails?
Yeah. Earlier, I'd written, here I'd written a memo to the Planning Commission, kind of outlining what that process is. That process is set forth in statute, in Minnesota statute 463. There's a step process, I guess I would say, about how we go about that. It would start, if you decide to go down that road, it would start tonight with a declaration that I would put in the form of a resolution after the fact that would declare this to be a hazardous property. In the definition of section of 463, there are a series, kind of a laundry list of things where the council could determine that the property is hazardous building or property. And that would be, among other things, inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, physical damage, unsanitary condition, constitutes a fire hazard, is a hazard to public safety or health. All or any of those things would allow, a finding on that basis on any of those things would allow the council to determine that this is a hazardous building or property, just based on the information you have, which is, you know, admittedly not perfect because we haven't been allowed access to the property. We have pictorial evidence from, I think, somebody, I would say the neighbor maybe that we've seen previously. We haven't been able to develop any evidence-
We haven't been able to develop any evidence really ourselves. But I would say, just from what I've seen of this so far, that any one of those things I just named off on that list, if not all of them, probably apply to this property. And so the step process would be for, if the city decides that it wants to start down that abatement track, then I would have you make a motion for a resolution tonight declaring it hazardous, based on that laundry list. And then once that's done, I'll notify Mr. Reese Rice, whoever says his name, by letter that we've done that, include a copy of the resolution once it's signed. And I'll ask him, at that point, to understand that at the March meeting, I'll prepare a proposed resolution for your consumption, which will be, which will be the order that 463 sets forth, requiring action on the property. That order then becomes the basis, if it's not acted on, becomes the basis to start a court action, or a court to affirm what the order says. The order directs him to do something, or directs that we'll raise the building, or tear it down, or whatever. And so then that starts a process like, it's really a lawsuit at that point, that, that order. If he responds to it, then we have an evidentiary process in front of the court to determine whether or not the order is valid, and if it is, then we take steps from there. So that's really kind of a rough process. But at the next meeting, if you decide to go down this track, I would put together a set of findings and a resolution that would amount to this order that's required under the statute. And then once we have that in place, we'll talk further about what we do from there. That's a real rough, I'll take questions on that if anybody's got them. There are timelines that are attached to that. The statute sets out that, in civil matters like this, I typically tell clients that in a, in a routine civil matter, from start to finish on a lawsuit, you could be talking about 18 months to a couple of years, from the start of it through all the processes that go. These matters under 463 are entitled to expedited treatment by the court, because of the obvious problem, public safety issue. So we don't have those kinds of timing issues. Still, the way, the way these things go, this wouldn't go quickly, but it would go a lot more quickly than what usual civil matters take. So if anybody's got any questions about me, what I just said, let's do that now. And if not, then I would propose some wording for, well, first of all, I guess I probably would prefer to have a motion from the council about whether or not you approve starting the abatement process. And then if that happens, then I would propose language for a resolution.
Just one question before we start. Any, any costs that we incur can be assessed back to the property, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And he's got the right, at any point here, once we start down this track, he's got the, he's, he's got a lot of things that he can do to acquiesce to this. He can agree to take the steps that we're ordering. He can agree to let us do it and assess him. There's a voluntary provision in that statute that allows for consent by the relevant owner to let us do what needs to be done on that property, and then assess the, the number back to him. So it's not as though if we start down this process, there's no looking back. There's still lots of places that this can resolve. But in order to move the needle on this, I think we need to start down this path. We haven't been able to get Mr. Reese's attention to this point. I don't know if this will get his attention, but if it doesn't get his attention, at least it gives us an avenue to do something during this construction season, potentially, to address that issue.
Well, it's unfortunate, obviously, that, that the property owner hasn't, at least thus far, put out a better effort to communicate with You know, there's, there's a part of me that really hesitates to go this route, but um
Does he live locally?
I don't actually know that.
No, he's got an address somewhere in the metro area, I want to say. When we send letters and correspondence to him, every time I send something to 26130, it gets returned. So I've resorted to sending him letters, as you've seen, that are addressed to that property address. We send them to him by email.
Okay.
Once we start, once we start a court process here, we would have him personally serve with process, just as you do when you start a lawsuit. It would give me a different sort of notice at that point.
Does he acknowledge receipt of the email?
No. No, but, you know, John, interestingly, one of those correspondences resulted in him throwing some, couple, submitting a couple of engineering drawings recently to Desmond, like in the last 30 days or so, which looked to be in furtherance of that variance process. So it told me that he was consuming what we were sending him, even though he wasn't acknowledging receipt of it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the city attorney to compose a resolution as he's outlined for us tonight, and come back to us with the final version to be signed by whom? Signed by whoever needs to sign it.
Well, typically, the resolution would be a memorialization of what got put on the record tonight, and signed by the mayor and by the clerk.
Okay.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay.
And just from a discussion standpoint, I appreciate, I think, what you were kind of alluding to, that it's, it's a big step, and, you know, it feels a little big brotherish. And I, you know, I don't, I don't like that. But I also think we have an obligation to the neighbors, the neighborhood, the city, to, you know, be able to maintain some sort of standards for what our city is supposed to look like, so.
And that I'd certainly do agree with.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions, or hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, one more thing then, in furtherance of what you just did. I'd like to craft, I propose to craft a resolution that would, that would basically indicate that the city council has determined, under Minnesota statute 463.15, that this is a hazardous building or property for the following reasons, and that would be the reasons that you heard me describe earlier. And if you approve that through a separate motion now, then I will, after the fact, create the resolution for the mayor and the clerk to sign, and then I'll have that piece in the record. And then I'll move on to the next pieces for the next meeting. So I would need a motion for a resolution, as I just described.
I'll, I'll make that motion to allow our attorney to move forward drafting the resolution.
I'll second.
Mike? Seconded by Hoff. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion also carries.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing, sorry to keep interrupting. Minnesota statute 463 does allow another path for the city to take too, and that is to declare this property, because of the hazardous nature of it, that it would be, that would, it would create a public purpose for the city to enter into an eminent domain proceeding. So that's another route. Rather than the statutory abatement process, there is the ability to condemn that property and go through those steps to take the property. Of course, by doing that, the city would then own the property, would be free to do whatever it wants to do with that structure, and then whatever it wants to do ultimately to dispose of that lot. There's pros and cons to either one of those processes, whether it's abatement or whether it's condemnation. Condemnation probably takes longer, it's probably more expensive, it's probably more difficult. But I just wanted the council to know that, and it's not a decision time on that, but it's a possible avenue here, too.
Okay. And that would probably, maybe, that would be something that the council could potentially do in the months ahead?
Yes.
Depending on how things go?
Yes.
That would be the nuclear option, which is very difficult to do, very difficult.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Item G, council reports. G1 is mayor's report. Looking forward to the special meeting next week to, to talk about the city sewer facility expansion. And that is, that is the, the goal for that meeting, is to talk about the facility itself. You know, I think there's two different topics when we talk about sewer. One is the facility, and the other is pipe in the ground, sort of thing. And I believe, just in discussions that I've heard, that we probably need to get moving along with the facility. So that is, that will be the topic. And actually going to look to talk with Mr. Hallen, to get some information pulled together. Probably information that's already there, but just has been parked in a file for, you know, the last year or a year and a half. Get that out again, kind of go through it, get some, you know, and have some discussion about where we left off, and where we want to go. That's all I have. Council members? Mr. Ryan?
Uh, two things. First of all, we got a couple of attaboys for our city staff. We had one for the Public Works Department, a young gal that lives down on one of our roads, sent in, took the time to send in a thank you to the guys plumbing. They did a great job on her road, and they were very happy. It was, I believe it was Bubba who was doing the driving. And the other one was, we got a letter from, or a mention from, for Chief Taylor, evidently some young lady put her car in the ditch on the slippery roads, and he was out there shoveling her out and helping get it pulled out. So it's kind of nice when people do send in thank yous, as opposed to the other, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, good, thank you for that.
That's it.
Mr. Hoff? You have anything?
Uh, just gonna be attending the conference this weekend for newly elected officials, Friday and Saturday, I think John's going to, one similar or two at Craig's, so it's in our backyard. But looking forward to that, to get a little bit more knowledgeable on what's going on, and keep my feet further into the pool.
Good deal. Good deal. Mr. Johnson?
Uh, the only thing I have to bring up, and it's, it's on our agenda here, but tomorrow night, the open house for the Gull Lake Trail meeting. I think a good chunk of us here will be in attendance. It is a joint meeting between Nisswa and Lake Shore, so Lake Shore will also be represented there. And I think, I think it'll be good.
This is, they're gonna have, this, this is where there can be different stations, so to speak.
Yes, yep, there'll be, right, there'll, there'll be kind of a, a, a big view of the trail as a whole, and then there will be, don't quote me on this, but seven, six or seven different sections or stations, sort of highlighting various sections of the trail. And the goal will be to have representatives at each, each of those stations to be able to answer questions, for folks to be able to get a little closer look. And we had one of these, when was the last one? August? Was it that long ago? Holy cow. I was gonna say it was like two months ago.
That's what I said.
And at that point, trail location and some things were, you know, not as finely tuned as they are now, so, so, yeah, hopefully it'll go well.
Yeah. I'm excited, I'm excited to see it. It's, you know, this is probably one of the big milestones, so to speak, is to actually have a presentation for the community, and, well, for both communities to see, and, and good feel for it, so, thank you. Mr. Johnson? Or, I'm sorry.
Johnson.
Again?
Well, the city attorney brought up the fact that the Planning and Zoning Commission would probably be getting a request for a PUD on the property north of Hills Crossing. You may remember, there was another application several months ago about that that didn't go forward. But there was a lot of questions about the easement that was at Hills Crossing that was never put together for, for an exit going to the south. I wonder if we can ask the city attorney to put together what he's done, or what he knows about that, that easement? I'm sure that it'll come up in, in the discussion with the Planning Commission, because most people say that they won't approve of anything unless there's a southern outlet, and that's the part that wasn't built. So if we could get a letter to the Planning Commission from the attorney about the status of that easement, that'd be helpful.
Will do. And by the next Planning and Zoning meeting? Is that what you're
I don't know when it's gonna come before, but sooner the better, I suppose.
That's true. We'll get something for you in advance, and for your packet for the next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
So Don, is there, do you know much about that? Is it, is it kind of stuck on that, on that particular item right now, or where is that?
No, nothing has come before the commission at all, on this new one. But on the former one, that didn't make it, it was a sticking point, because they wanted an exit to the north, and an exit to the south for public safety reasons. And if we found that the exit going to the south was supposed to be over easement, that was supposed to be constructed, when they put in the Hills Crossing unit there, it never happened, so we, we need to know legally where we stand, if we're gonna discuss the PUD north of there.
And when you said they, regarding the two exits and entrances, was that the Planning and Zoning?
Planning and Zoning Commission at that time, insisting on two exits, two exits.
Sure. Okay.
Was, was the previous application of a pod-type unit?
It never made it.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
I would entertain I have one other thing, just a correction on the Gull Lake Trail meeting on March 14th. I think that's been moved to March 19th, due to spring break.
Oh, yeah. Good point.
Item 5?
Yep.
It's the 19th?
I think it's at 5:00 PM as well, so, just a date change.
Okay. Would entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.